I'll meet in the order. Do us all stand for our invitation. Williams, if you will lead us in our invitation. I appreciate it.
Oh Father, which I didn't hear. You come tonight seeking that blessings and our understanding. Father God, we ask you to give this board wisdom and understanding, Father God, to guide this town and citizens in the way that would be beneficial to everyone. Father God, we ask you to look down on us, Father God, and guide our mind, our thoughts, to make this town, citizens, feel a better place to live, work, and have activities. Father God, we ask you to bless the members on this board, bless our citizens, Father God. And then we ask you to bless the military, all the military people that's in foreign lands, those that have been here. Father God, we ask you to continue to bless them, God, and, Father God, guide the leaders that sit on there, Father God, that they will be able to come back to us one day and will be able to be a captain in these United States. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing and face the flag as we pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Before we go into the approval of the agenda, I would like to appoint our deputy town clerk, Shannon Williams, and I'm going to ask if she will come forward and place your hand on the Bible, place your other right hand. Ms. Williams, if you will repeat after me. I, Shannon L. Williams, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and Constitution and laws of the North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as deputy town clerk. So help me God. Thank you very much. If you'd be seated, then keep us all straight. Now we'll move to the time of the approval of the agenda, and are there any changes, deletions, or additions to the agenda, gentlemen? I have one. I want to recognize Mr. Norwood Blanchard III that will be here under presentation reports tonight for a report on his league findings. We'll add him to the presentation reports. Are there other additions that may be? Yes, Mr. Godwin?
It's not really an addition, but just want to make clear that under item two, after we have the public hearing, we need to consider adoption and resolution for the process project.
Okay. We'll make the adoption resolution. Also, at such time tonight, rather than having the closing out of this session, we will continue to recess this session for hopefully for budget meeting. We'll still need to confirm that date with some of the council to make sure that's right. Is that right, Mr. Godwin? That's your recommendation? Okay. Do I have an approval of agenda with those changes?
Second.
Second? Okay, those in favor, aye. Those opposed? Okay. At this time, we will go into our presentation reports, and Mr. Blanchard, I'll ask if you will come forward and share with us some findings that you may have had in most recent days, if you'd like.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name again is Norwood Blanchard. I am an attorney with, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought somebody asked something over there. I'm an attorney with Crosley, McIntosh, and Collier in Wilmington, and I have a practice that's in large part municipal employment, public sector employment work. I was contacted on May 25th by the staff at the North Carolina League of Municipalities about conducting an investigation and preparing a report into the facts and circumstances surrounding a series of salary adjustments for certain employees of the town. I met with town attorney Spence and Mayor Evans the next day, on May 26th. Prior to this meeting with them, I knew town attorney Spence briefly from my prior law firm, but I don't believe that I've had anything with the town of Smithfield, at least not in the past eight or 10 years. So that was the first time I had met Mr. Evans, Mayor Evans, or any of the witnesses in this case. Now, what I was tasked with doing after speaking with Mr. Spence and Mayor Evans was the town, I understood that the town's primary concerns were that during the budget process in May and June of 2010, the council had been led to believe that town employees, none of the town's employees, would be getting pay raises during the upcoming fiscal year, which ran from July 1st, 2010, to June 30th, 2011, due to the town's fiscal constraints. And as a secondary item, I was instructed that the council was also concerned about some large unanticipated expenditures that resulted from several employees cashing out accrued vacation leave due to purported hardship situations. So with these concerns in mind, I was asked to interview the employees that were believed to have knowledge of the situation and focus on two issues. First, whether the town manager knew about and/or authorized the raises at issue. And second, was the town council purposefully misled or kept in the dark about the raises? And again, as I mentioned earlier, as a secondary issue, I was directed to ask about the circumstances surrounding the hardship payouts for accrued vacation leave time. That day, the 26th, I interviewed Mayor Evans very briefly, Justin Merritt, the finance director, Lenny Branch, the public works director, and town manager Eric Williams. Now, with respect to Mr. Merritt and Lenny Branch, I did not spend a tremendous amount of time with them because Mr. Spence had already conducted an investigation and received sworn statements from these individuals. And again, my understanding was that the town, their purpose in bringing me in to do this was that they wanted an independent set of eyes to look over the situation and tell you what my conclusions were about it. And again, I'm somebody with no ties to the town. I don't routinely do your work or anything like that. So in a situation like this, ordinarily, you would expect two people who've been hired to look into it, particularly fiduciaries like the town's attorney and myself, to come to either the same conclusion or pretty similar conclusions. I mean, the facts are what they are. So what should run up a red flag for you isn't if we have similar observations about it, but if we had dramatically different ones. That would be something that you would not expect to find, and that should give you some concern. What I did with those two employees that I started with, Merritt and Branch, was went over their affidavits and asked them first, you know, "Tell me if there's anything in the affidavit you've given that in hindsight you think was incorrect or incomplete or anything like that." Both of them verified, "No, this is the way it happened." And then after that, I just asked them, kind of in a free-form fashion, well, just free-form fashion, "Tell me what happened," in your words. Tell me what happened." And we went through it again, and I, the report that I prepared for you, I did not take copies of the affidavit. I prepared it from my own notes and what they told me. So there are, you know, some materials, some facts in here that I'm certain are in the affidavits that I didn't really cover. They're sworn statements, so you can go back over those if you want more detail, but you can see I ended up with nine single-spaced pages here, so I went into some detail about what they told me. Now, I didn't speak with Ms. Godwin that day because I'd learned that she had hired her own, retained her own legal counsel, and ethically, Mr. Spence and I weren't allowed to interview her without clearing it with our attorney. And yesterday, the reason for the delay in me getting this to you was that I didn't get to speak to her until yesterday afternoon due to some scheduling conflicts, but I did have a lengthy conversation with her yesterday. Her attorney, prior to that conversation, provided me with an affidavit that Ms. Godwin had prepared. So again, I followed a similar drill with that. I asked her about the affidavit, but I also asked Ms. Godwin in more detail about the hardship payouts because my understanding was that she was the employee with the largest stop sum of money at issue in that. Now, with respect to the first issue, the pay raises, again, I've covered it in excruciating detail here in the report that I prepared for you, and Mr. Spence covered it in detail in his affidavit, so I'm not going to go through that line by line, but I will kind of hit the high points with you and tell you what everybody seemed to agree on, the facts that everybody seemed to agree on, and then what they disagreed on. Now, what they all agreed on was that the town board had not been notified about these pay raises prior to the time that Councilman Broadwell and Mayor Evans discovered a related item. According to both Mr. Merritt and Mr. Williams, Councilman Broadwell and the mayor approached them earlier in the year, and there's some dispute about the dates. Mr. Williams seemed to believe that it was towards April. Mr. Merritt believed that it was earlier in the year, maybe late January, February. But be that as it may, both of them agreed that the initial inquiry came because Councilman Broadwell and Mayor Evans went to see Mr. Merritt because they had noticed that one of the line items in a budget report had gone over. There was a significant discrepancy between what was budgeted year-to-date and what that line item was showing year-to-date as far as the expenditures. Went in and raised the issue with Mr. Merritt and said, "Hey, what's going on here? Why are we so far over on this salary line item in the budget?" Mr. Merritt said, "Well, we'll find out." According to him, he went and asked Mr. Williams and Ms. Godwin, and was told that the reason for that was that they had cashed out some accrued vacation time. Now, Ms. Godwin had the most information about the accrued vacation time, I guess for a couple of reasons. One, she was most familiar with it, as best I could tell. This was not apparently the first time that a town employee had done that. As Ms. Godwin explained it to me, she had had accrued vacation time roll over from past years when she had not taken all of it. She had been with the town for a long time, so she had a relatively large balance built up. Now, according to Ms. Godwin, and I believe I've verified this with Mr. Spence, your former town manager, Mr. Connet, when he left, he had accrued a large amount of vacation time, and he was paid out for approximately 400 hours of it, is what Ms. Godwin said. I didn't verify that number, but I do understand that it was a large amount, so there was some precedent for doing that. And I'm taking these two things kind of out of order because that's how they came to you. But the problem that this causes for the town, obviously, is that vacation pay isn't really intended to be used that way. What you're anticipating when you prepare a budget for the year is that a person who has a salary of, let's say, $20,000 a year, they'll get paid a total of $20,000 that year. Now, some of it, you know, let's just say for the sake of argument, $19,000 is going to be earned wages for the time that they're actually showing up to work, and then the rest of it will be paid vacation time for the time they take off over Christmas and things like that. But the bottom line is, you're anticipating they're going to be paid $20,000. What happened in this situation was that Ms. Godwin and Mr. Williams and another employee, I believe Ms. Powell, were the three primary examples I was giving, but they had large balances of accrued vacation leave, and rather than taking off paid time like the town would have expected, they went in and said, "Hey, can I cash this out? I have an immediate or pressing financial need. I've earned this time. Can I cash it out?" Now, you know, most of the time, what happens with employees when they build up large balances of these types of leave, I understand when they leave, when they separate from employment, they can apply that towards retirement. So that's where they get paid out for it in the typical course of events. What happened here was that they kind of accelerated it, and that caused a big bump in your budget that was not anticipated. Now, I, from looking at that, I don't believe, in fact, I'm almost positive, that nothing of a criminal nature occurred with respect to that, because this was a benefit that was in fact earned. North Carolina does have a statute dealing with embezzlement or misapplication of funds by public officers, but it requires a fraudulent intent is one of the elements. And basically, what that would mean was, in this situation, you'd have to prove that somebody was going in and cashing out time that they hadn't in fact earned. The fact that they cashed it out early here, again, it's bad for budgetary reasons, and it's a poor exercise of judgment, and it's something that Mr. Williams should not have approved, in my opinion. It should have been caught, and there should have been some limit on it. But I think that the cause for that, that particular issue, was, as I pointed out in the report, two things. Two factors came into play first, that you didn't have a policy for it set up ahead of time. So there's, you know, poorly defined parameters for when people could use this hardship cash-out situation. Secondly, just poor judgment. Just poor judgment. Going forward, I understand that interim town manager, Godwin, has discontinued the practice. Good idea, I think, because you know what's going to happen is, or what would happen in almost any situation, you'd have to have a budget amendment later in the year to account for the unanticipated expense if people did this. My suggestion is that either you continue to discontinue it, that you don't allow it going forward, or if you do, you make it a very, very, very confined amount of time that can be cashed out. Say, for example, if somebody's going to roll over, lose some vacation time, and they won't be able to take it in the near future, you might let them cash out 10 or 12 hours, but not thousands of dollars. And just to give you an idea of the cash amount, I understand that, according to Ms. Godwin, the amount that Mr. Williams cashed out was in excess of $8,000 with respect to Ms. Godwin. She couldn't give me an exact amount, and I apologize, I didn't track down the exact amount, but I understand that it was in excess of $30,000, and the grand total was somewhere north of $50,000, $50,000 to $75,000. I did not, the exact dollar amount wasn't that important for me to sort out what happened. That's something that you can do in-house. But the bottom line is, the effect of that on your budget is the same as going out and hiring a full-time management-level employee who's unbudgeted for the year. Now, we'd all agree that'd be a bad thing to do. So I think that does show very poor judgment, not anything that would support a criminal conviction, in my opinion, unless it were established that the people did not have the actual leave time, and there's been no suggestion of that. Now, to skip back to the other issue, the raises, this one was a little more complicated. Let me tell you about what everybody agreed on first. All of the witnesses, and by that I mean Mayor Evans, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Branch, town manager Williams, and Ms. Godwin, everyone agreed that the board didn't know about it, didn't find out about it until Mr. Broadwell and the mayor discovered it earlier in the spring. The real crux of the dispute here is over what Mr. Williams knew. Now, looking back at the budget from last year, in hindsight, we can see that three departments, general, the general government one, public works, and finance, all had their salary line item increased by $25,000 in the budget that the council ended up adopting. Now, Mr. Williams' explanation was that he had intended to include an extra $25,000 in only one of the departments, general government. And his rationale for doing that was that he was concerned that two of the employees, and there were Lenny Branch and Mr. Merritt, were not being paid salaries that were in line with what other local governments in the area were paying comparable positions. So his plan, according to Mr. Williams, was that he would go ahead and ask for the extra money, and then during the fiscal year, at some point, if the comps came back, if the comparable salaries came back and showed that they were in fact being underpaid, he could go back to the board and say, "I think we need some salary adjustments for these employees, and, you know, it's not going to cause us to run over budget because we've already budgeted for it." Fair enough. Where the accounts that Mr. Williams and the other witnesses start to diverge, though, is on what happened after that. Again, Mr. Williams claims that his intent was only to put it in one of the departments, but the final budget that you had had that $25,000 extra in all three departments. And Mr. Branch brought copies of the back-and-forth documents that he exchanged with Mr. Williams, the preliminary budgets, that it appears to me tend to show that the $25,000 for public works was inserted by Mr. Williams. Now, I'm not positive about that. I know that, you know, that Mr. Merritt typically prepares, the budget actually enters the numbers on the computer, but, you know, I understand that both of them had some access to it, and that the responsibility for preparing the budget by statute falls with the town manager. In any event, the paperwork appears to show that Mr. Branch didn't ask for the extra $25,000, but it did end up in his budget. Mr. Branch also reported that prior to the budget being adopted, and by the way, all three of these employees stated that prior to the budget being adopted last year, that Mr. Williams had come to them and told them, "I'm going to get raises for you guys." And all three of them also affirmed that at different times, they had asked, "Well, how do we deal with this issue with the board?" Essentially, and Mr. Williams had said, "I work for the board directly. You don't. My job, I answer to the board, you answer to me, and I'll take it up with the board. I'll take care of that. I'll handle that matter for you." Now, that's their version of the story. Mr. Williams' version of the story is that those conversations never occurred. So again, we have a situation where one of the witnesses has given us one account, and the other three have given a different account of the situation. You know, this calls for somebody to make credibility determination, unfortunately, and I don't have any kind of crystal ball that helps me make any better credibility determinations than you do. I don't know any of these employees, hadn't known them prior to this. So the conclusions that I gave you in my report, basically what I did was try to figure out what's the simplest explanation for this, what's the one with the least moving parts. Now, based on that, you know, my conclusion is that I didn't find Mr. Williams' account of it credible on that issue, because, again, most of the facts and circumstances, everybody agreed about. Mr. Williams just, you know, did not, his explanation didn't fit some of the other facts, and I'll give you a great example of that. Mr. Williams reported to me, and Mr. Spence was actually present for this as well, that he placed great emphasis on the fact that the salary adjustment forms for those employees hadn't been signed. And that's true, and that typically would be troublesome. Well, looking back, it turns out that that wasn't all that uncommon, that a lot of the salary adjustment forms, from what I could see, for other employees, he had not signed. So, you know, that's not particularly enlightening. Now, what is, though, is that Ms. Williams, or Ms. Godwin, claims that on a couple of different occasions, she went to Williams and said, "Hey, I need you to sign these forms." And I'm paraphrasing here. She said, "Hey, I need you to sign these forms. When are you going to get around to signing the forms?" And he said, "I'll take care of it later. I'll take care of it later." She just put the copies of the forms in the files and didn't think about it again. She figured, "Hey, he said he was going to do it. He'll do it." And it didn't come up again until Mayor Evans and Councilman Broadwell found out about this earlier. Now, what Mr. Williams says, though, again, you know, that conversation didn't happen, "I wasn't aware of those pay raises. I hadn't authorized them." He does say, though, that, he acknowledges that Ms. Williams came, Ms. Godwin, I apologize, came to him with the forms and said, "I need you to sign these." And the terms, you know, I wrote down the exact quote, he said, "She was flitting around the office with these forms." And he did not, according to his account, ask her at the time, "Hey, what are you talking about on these pay raises? I've never heard of these things." You know, that's what I would have expected if the pay raises came as a shock to him, for him to say, "What are you talking about?" But he said, "No, I didn't ask her that." Also, one of the other issues about it is that both Ms. Godwin and Mr. Merritt gave sworn statements saying that they were in Ms. Godwin's office and called Mr. Williams at home. I understand he had missed a great deal of work last year due to some medical issues. He was working from home. Ms. Godwin can recount the actual date based on her journal. I believe she said July 6th of 2010, and the reason that that's important is because that was just before the first paychecks of the new fiscal year were going to be handed She called Mr. Williams at home with Mr. Merritt present in her office at the time, and asked, "Do I go ahead and enter these pay adjustments in the payroll system?" And both of them verified that, he said, "Yeah, go ahead and do it. Go ahead and do it." Now, again, Mr. Williams' account of that is that that conversation didn't occur. So like I said, we have a credibility dispute with respect to that narrow issue, but most of the other facts, everybody agrees on. Now, because of that, I don't see any way to conclusively prove who's telling the truth about that and who's not, but, you know, I drew the conclusions that I gave you based on what the based on what those surrounding circumstances were. Now, trying to think if there's anything else. I'm talking to you like I know that you know about this because I expect that most of you have some familiarity with the situation. Well, one of the things, one of the other observations I'll make, and I'll, you know, give the board a pat on the back about this, is that town boards, towns, cities and towns in North Carolina are municipal corporations. So, the role of a town board and a town manager is very much analogous to the role of a CEO of a corporation, a private corporation, and the board of directors to that corporation. In fact, North Carolina general statutes tell us that the town manager and a council manager form of government is the chief administrative officer for the town. And that he handles, you know, all of the day-to-day programs. He's specifically tasked with administering the pay and classification programs that have been adopted by the town. And the council's role is general oversight, general government and oversight by statute. That makes sense. If you had a mayor council form of government, you'd be a lot closer to it. But when you get a town of a certain size, like Smithfield, that's not feasible. The reason you hire a town manager is the same reason that a corporation has a CEO to handle all of those day-to-day administrative affairs. Town board members, you know, you're paying somebody to watch the shop for you essentially on a day-to-day basis. A town board's job is essentially to manage by exception. When they notice something that isn't turning out to be as you had budgeted or anticipated it, you go and find out what the reason for it is. Now, fortunately, that's what happened here. And it happened relatively early, I say relatively early, midway through the fiscal year. Because you're looking, the reports that you get are backward-looking. So, you're looking at what happened two or three months ago in many instances. So, you know, here, the system ultimately worked, at least from the board's perspective, as it's supposed to. You know, the board's oversight picked up a problem, something that the board wasn't aware of. And now, hopefully, it's been fixed going forward. And that, now that I mentioned this, about this happening at that time of year in the fiscal year, that just reminded me of one other reason that I had some pause about Mr. Williams' explanation. Again, if he was planning on awarding those raises, he claims, you know, his version of the events was that he did not find out until the week preceding Easter. That would have been fairly far along in the fiscal year to wait on those raises if it had been his plan to go get them later. So, that didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me on that. But I think if you've got any specific details about the facts and circumstances, I hope you'll find them in, either in the report I prepared or in the affidavit that Mr. Spence prepared. Any particular questions I can answer for you?
Do the board have any questions as to Mr. Blatter's report?
I apologize for droning on so long about this.
That's okay. I hadn't had a whole lot of time to digest this. I think it was emailed out at 4:42 this afternoon, if I'm not mistaken. So, I haven't had a lot of time, except for the last 20 minutes or 30 minutes to actually, to look at the report. I just have basically one question you had mentioned about calling Mr. Williams at home on a specific date. I guess my one question there was, did you verify that Mr. Williams was actually out of work that day?
I did not. I did not. Although, I'm not sure whether you could verify that in hindsight or not. Mr. Williams told me that Ms. Godwin, and I believe Ms. Powell, kept up with his leave. And I got kind of a slightly different account from Ms. Godwin. She stated that, at least in the beginning, they did not keep up with his leave. So, that he worked from home a lot. And as she explained, you know, he's a salaried employee and he had always told us, "Hey, if you're a salaried employee, technically, if you're exempt, if you work some part of the week, you're entitled to be paid for the whole part of the week," which, you know, as a matter of wage and hour law, happens to be true. I don't know whether he was at home or not on that day.
Did you, how about, did you check to see whether the call was made, or ask whether a call was made from a cell phone or an office phone here to his home?
I did not check.
Just for credibility, just for, you know, I'm just for credibility purposes, I mean, you know.
I did not check the office. Now, I will tell you that, again, that one of the questions, when I went back to Ms. Godwin, she was last, by the way. She was the last employee that I spoke to. So, one of the things that I did when talking to her was to ask, "Here are some of the conflicting factual accounts that I've gotten. So, can you point me to any employees, other than, you know, this core group, that could shed some light on these issues? People that can verify some of these things? Or do you know of any paper trail that I can look to to nail down conclusively these items?" And the only thing that she could point out right off the top of her head was that she had kept a journal. Also, she said with respect to that very phone conversation, that Mr. Merritt was in her office. She was not sure whether her assistant, who I also believe is named Williams. Shannon Williams, is that right? Okay, Shannon Williams. Didn't know whether Ms. Williams had heard or not, but that she was right outside the door and she may have heard. And again, I spoke to her yesterday afternoon late. So, I did not, you know, have a chance to run down that rabbit on it. But that was the, one of the primary things I was looking for. Because obviously, if you've got a paper trail, that helps. That was one thing that I did find significant, though, about Mr. Branch, his account. He did have, you know, something of a paper trail to verify what he was saying about the budget numbers being changed. And, you know, Mr. Branch, I found him, you know, particularly credible in this situation because he was the least involved person. He got a pay raise. And what him and, what both Mr. Branch and Mr. Merritt said was that, "Look, you know, he had told us we deserved these raises. And we happen to agree with that," which is not remarkable to me, that most people do think they deserve a raise. In their dealings with the council, employment matters probably rarely come up. So, when they said, "Hey, you know, he told us, he had cleared this with the council and, you know, Merritt says he asked twice, at least twice, that he could recall." He said, "You know, we believed him. We just assumed." And with respect to Merritt, Mr. Merritt, you know, he prepares budgets. So, they, anything he picks up on in there. He said, "You know, I thought the $25,000 in the budget would have been obvious. Now, to laypeople like me and board members, it wouldn't be. You know, that's why you pay finance directors and town managers." But I can, I can see, you know, that their explanation on that appeared, you know, perfectly plausible to me. The reason that they didn't go back, you know, in the private sector, you don't see that. A corporate officer goes and gets a pay raise. They don't race out to the board of directors next time, next week, and say, "Hey, did you guys know that I got this, you know, 8%, 9% pay raise? Are you okay with that?" If the CEO says, "I got the pay raise for you," that's the end of it. And it was budgeted. So, you know, I can see how that very, very well would have answered any of their questions. What was significant about that to me, though, was that all of those employees recognized that the issue of these pay raises would have been of concern to the board. And I think that's why they asked Mr. Williams, or they, you know, so they asked Mr. Williams, "Did you clear it?"
Any other questions? Or the, I probably shouldn't do this, but I want the community, is there any questions of the community they have for Mr. Blatter? Feel free to ask that question. Mr. Johnson?
My name is David Johnson. Is this the only counter those emails? I would assume that if these things were, in a sense of nature, having a phone call and back-to-back discussions, somebody usually have some email outlet, they, they, they.
That was a specific question that I asked, you know, Ms. Godwin, in particular, when I asked, again, since she was last, by that time, it kind of put in focus what things were being disputed and what weren't. So, you know, that was the reason I asked, "Can you think of any paper trail for this? Is there anything that I can look to that can conclusively establish on these disputed topics, you know, who's telling us the correct version of the events?" She reported to me that Mr. Williams did use email frequently in the job. He sent things by email all the time. But she didn't know right off the top of her head whether there was an email trail for that or not. And again, this happened yesterday, yesterday afternoon. If I were looking going forward, you know, if I were trying to conclusively prove one way or another what happened, you know, that'd be a good place to look. Certainly would.
Any other questions?
Is Mr. Blatter's report in the affidavit? Is it public record?
The report is, I think we've got copies here of this report, okay? Two of the affidavits are public record and the other one I can personally give you. I can give you the affidavit, I can give you what affidavit it says.
I would like to see it digested as well, if you can make this possible.
And I don't mind telling you, I was tasked with preparing this for the, you know, for the town. So, I'm turning it over to them and, you know, what they want to do with it is, I'm out of the picture from that point going forward.
I know the town had two computer people search for emails.
The town had two computer people search for emails. Whether they did a good job or not, I don't know. But they did search over a number of days and did not find them. And three of the employees' offices are right beside each other. So, this could have been, I just, we did not, those computer people who work for the town could not find the emails. To answer your question, Mr. Ashley, we do have copies and we'll be glad to provide them. Any other questions?
Now, you were telling us that last year, this money was actually budgeted into the budget, right? Is that what you're telling us, the 25,000?
And I haven't reviewed the line items for the budget. I understand, yes, that on the salary and wages line item for three departments, that $25,000 more was included over the base year, over the prior year amount. Now, and I don't have a copy of a budget here with me to show you, but it doesn't break out employee by employee whose salary will be what. So, for example, one of the things that I think probably would have caused some confusion or would have made it difficult for a board member to pick up on this was that employees were transferred, in particular to Public Works. An employee had been transferred from another department to Public Works. Now, that would have changed both of their budget figures for salary and wages without any other, any other change being made. That would have caused them to be different.
Well, I'm not saying that the council, nobody called. That's not what I'm asking. What I'm trying to find out is, what do we need to do that this won't happen again? Because I'm assuming when you say budget, the utility market gives you a budget. And somewhere in that thing, there was something for $25,000 more in salaries than last year. And the council had already said that there would be no salary increases. And how do they get in there?
One of the reasons, a lot of times where discrepancies in cities and towns' budgets are picked up is by the auditors at the end of the year. But you've got to remember, that audit doesn't happen. It looks backward, not forward. And that's one of the issues here. This was a forward-looking budget for the next year that they were put into. And as I pointed out earlier, the council picked up on this midway through the year because of this backward-looking report that showed what had already happened. Something was out of line on it. One of the concerning things, though, that your question brings up is, had the employees not cashed out their paid vacation time like that, and there had not been an exception on that line, then it's possible that you wouldn't have known about this even now unless you had thought to pick up the phone and call down to the clerk's office and ask. And by the way, we, all of the salaries of public employees in any town are public record. There's a list in the general statute, 168-168, that gives you a list of things that are available to the public any time. But people just don't do it that often. They don't check. So, what I'm getting at is that, you know, that might not have been discovered even now had it not been for them going over the budget and the fact that the employees cashed out some vacation. Now, what to do about it going forward? I don't know how much extra trouble this would be. Well, I guess I was, he's the man to talk to. He gets paid to do this.
There are several, several obvious things, just very clear. One is, the manager is also the budget officer, separate from the finance officer. Part of the budget officer's job is to review the budget on a monthly basis when the monthly reports are submitted. The typical easy red flag you look at is, what percentage of the budget's been spent after the first month and the second month? And it divided by 12, you get about 8% per month. So, if you're into the second month and you're at 20%, you got a red flag. Boom, you know, right there. So, partly that's the manager's responsibility. The other thing that this board has already done is, last week, a motion was made and seconded, and the board voted to adopt a line item budget. So, anything that exceeds any individual line item going forward is going to have to come back to the board with an explanation of why. So, there are, there are obvious red flags and there are also mechanisms that this board's already adopted to make sure of that. And I guess, secondly, that it is clearly the responsibility of the manager to keep the budget in line and see if an amendment's necessary. And I'm sorry, it did not happen this time. But there waits to see, in my opinion.
It may also be a good idea to make certain that before the manager or maybe the budget director puts a new salary in, we send that maybe before we sign.
Yeah, and we've put that in place already, and that's a great idea. The other, the other thing that I want to explain, in Smithfield, it's a little bit easier the way we budget because each person is placed in a specific department. In most towns, that's not even the case. A lot of towns, you may have a utility collections clerk. 25% of her salary may be to sewer, 25% to water, 25% to electricity, for example. Or the position of the city manager might be divided among all the departments. So, you have a number that doesn't, typically, you'd have a number that doesn't automatically correlate to a body. It's a budgeted amount for that department that may have parts of any number of people associated with it. So, and there are things that change throughout the year. You mentioned transfers, but there are retirees, transfers, sick leave, whatever. So, it's, it's simple if you do it for a living. It's not so simple if you don't do it for a living.
Any other questions when moving on?
Do they approve the unbudgeted funds for vacation pay for employees and do approve it for the city manager?
For the city manager, I can't tell that anyone approved it. And that was one of the concerns that I pointed out, and that it was specifically signed off on by anyone, if that makes sense. For the other employees, for Ms. Godwin? Ms. Godwin reported to me that she went to Mr. Williams and told him that she needed to do this, and Mr. Williams approved it. Now, she also can, I understand, had sworn statements, according to her attorney, had sworn statements. sworn statements from two other employees, Ms. Powell and, and I believe also, Ms. Williams, verifying that they were present when that happened. And by the way, Mr. Williams doesn't dispute that. He said, "Yeah, I approved it." Now, he, I, my recollection of it was that he did not, wasn't aware of the exact amount. She claims that Mr. Williams just said, "Well, if you've got time, you know, go cash out the time that you need to cash out." Essentially, a blank check, almost. She also informed me that, you know, she did not keep a running tab on it other than the balance of what was left in her paid vacation, which was kept by, you know, by payroll. So, she expressed surprise at what the total turned out to be in hindsight. I think she didn't realize how much it, how much it had been. Mr. Williams, I want to say his, according to Ms. Godwin, was in the form of two lumps that totaled, I gave you a dollar amount, I want to say it was, and I did not go back to your finance officer, but she told me eighty-three, sixty-six, seventy-five. And I understand his annual salary was approximately a hundred thousand. So, one of the things about it is, according to Ms. Godwin, when Mr. Williams was hired, he was given credit essentially for his time in the system with other towns around. So, he was accruing vacation leave at a rate of sixteen hours in a month, two days, two days a month. So, it would not be surprising that he would build up a large amount relatively quickly if he wasn't taking.
Any other questions?
Can you tell us how much time he spent on this? Does that make you just hear Jeff Doherty?
No, actually, I was here last week, the twenty-sixth. I would, and I haven't totaled up my time yet, I would guess I probably got in the neighborhood of seventeen or eighteen hours.
Do you think that you have done a good job and a thorough job of doing this job?
I think I was...
Be less stupid, I want to know if you think you have done a thorough job.
Well, I was going to say, I think I have done what I was tasked with doing. And remember that I did not invent the wheel on this. My job was to go back over ground that had already been plowed. And one thing, you bring up a very good point. I get paid by the hour or so. My time costs money. Now, I, that causes a balancing, a need for some balancing. I'd be happy to sit here and go through your books at length if you want me to, but I don't think that serves the town's needs. In this instance, I assume that I'm being paid by the league of municipalities, that was who contacted me. I don't think that Mr. Spence was the one who decided who would do this. I think they called the, my understanding was that they called the league and said, "Is there somebody you'd recommend?" The league provides this kind of service for its constituent members, whether or not they're involved with the risk pool.
Any other questions?
I have a couple more questions, but you do admit that you're reviewing here as many, that you're just reviewing, reviewing ground on the cloud by Mr. Spence.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And what, you know, again, I had the benefit of having these sworn statements already, so rather than rewriting them myself, I went over them with the people. Like I pointed out earlier, asked, "Is there anything else you want to tell me?" And then went and asked and said, "Hey, is there, tell me the story." Again, because a lot of times when you ask people to do that freely, they'll recite it, and if you pick up discrepancies, you know, that gives you, gives you reason to have questions about their credibility. I didn't see that. Now, again, the person, the two witnesses that I spent the most time with, and that's because they were the ones that were kind of at the heart of the controversy, were Mr. Williams. I, my recollection of it is that I talked to Mr. Williams probably two hours or so, you know, face to face, and Ms. Godwin. Now, I also spoke to Ms. Godwin's attorney on several different occasions also.
Did you speak to Ms. Godwin in person or by telephone?
By telephone, yes, sir.
Is there a policy, or was there a policy in place in Smithfield requiring town manager signature on wages?
I believe that's correct. Yes, there was. There was a form for it, in fact. And that, again, that was one of the things that Mr. Williams placed a lot of emphasis on, that, you know, "Look, these forms were not, my signature is not on these change forms," is basically, well, that's exactly what he said.
Is there a policy in place, my question, I heard what you said?
There is.
Is there a policy in place requiring your signature?
There is. And, you know, in this circumstance, had that policy been perfectly followed, it would have, it would have, it would have done away with the dispute that we have, but it may not have avoided the problem. Does that make sense?
May I clarify that just a little bit better? There, there's a personnel policy that's fairly thick, and it refers to leave and accumulated leave and all that kind of thing. It does not say in the personnel policy, the form must be signed by every party. That's one of those unwritten policies, okay? But the form clearly has space for every signature on it. There are numerous signatures.
It's more accurate for me to say that that's the drill that's used in this situation. That's the procedure that they use. It's not part of your personnel policy.
Is it probably the same for raises and cashing out vacation time?
There, as of right now, there is no such thing as cashing out vacation time. It does not exist.
One last question, I probably, I was on call. The cashing out vacation time, that's something that's been going on for a number of years. That might just issue.
And you're right, I got slightly different responses on that. Mr. Merritt indicated that prior to this fiscal year, he, and he only did a limited review, is what he told me, but he had not seen that come up in prior years. But I did understand from all of the other witnesses that, that former town manager, Connet, had cashed out a significant amount, and that had caused some consternation among the board members when that happened.
Let me clarify that also. A quantum leap was made some point in the past year, it appears.
That's a good way to...
There was a practice, not policy, a practice of if someone were retiring and they had accumulated and they were about to leave, part of their retirement severance package was that they could carry that, those days with them as a payoff. That's completely different and separate from the concept of hardship pay, which was invented at some point in the past few years. And that is...
Five, ten, two?
It, I mean, quite honestly, it really happened a lot in the past year, and I don't find it prior to that. So, it started after Eric got here, pretty much.
Emory, I can say this. I retired from the town of Smithfield in nineteen ninety-seven. When I retired, each year, I was parts of rec director. It was kind of a two or three-man show at that time, so I couldn't take all of my vacation days. And every single year, I lost vacation days because I couldn't take them all, because we had, somebody had to do the work. And we could keep up at two-hundred-and-forty hours, that's six weeks' pay. And when I retired, I got six weeks of pay. Didn't get any extra, didn't cash in. Like I said, we lost time, like six days. It didn't, it didn't go over to six days, we just lost it, it was gone. So, I can say it, in nineteen ninety-seven, it didn't, it didn't happen. Because the policy says two-hundred-and-forty hours, keep two-hundred-and-forty hours, that's what we had. And we didn't, no such thing as carry over.
Any more questions?
Thank you for letting me ask a question. I've got one question. Who was managing Miss Godwin's vacation time? Who was managing the approval of that?
Payroll, which I believe would have been Ms. Powell, is that?
And she was one of the parties that had the whole amount down?
I don't know what the exact amount of her, I understand that she cashed them out, but, but, but I didn't, I did not interview Ms. Powell because she did not appear to be involved in the primary issue here that I was asked about was the pay raises, to tell you the truth. The cashing out of the vacation time was a secondary one. But yes, you're right. She, and again, in this instance, Ms. Godwin went to, went to Mr. Williams for approval.
Yes, sir.
The importance of Martha Earl then town retired, is really the hope that Godwin's going to retire. I say this since she was a taxpayer, her name on the street, as she runs the town, I believe in the news.
We're going to be discussing that later in the evening, sir.
You have a total housecleaning line, you do it, not a late shift, and help the taxpayer get rid of this stuff. We have it done.
One of the concerns, I was just going to say, that was beyond the scope of, you know, they gave me a very narrow task, but one of the concerns that you have with management level employees like this always is that maintaining public confidence is an important part, you know, important part of your job. Taxpayer money should be treated more carefully than you treat your own money, to tell you the truth. We don't all have audits go on every year. Other than my wife auditing my checking account, I don't have one every year. But cities and towns do for very, you know, for that very reason. Somebody else's money.
Well, being honest with you, I don't know the way, but I have heard that short four years I've lived in Smithfield, as she runs the town. And I've asked two or three people, did they involve them, is that true? They said yes. And so, we need to check into these things and find out what's going on. She has had some of these things ready for the board long time. So, if I'm saying something's wrong, prove me wrong, and help me understand. I've got our computers, I can reach her from that, and the bar was taken, told me that Powell has retired, and I'm hoping that Godwin's going to retire.
Okay. Mr. Blanchard?
Yeah. I've had, having worked for several multinational corporations for the last forty-five years, I have some real problems with all of them. Who is our auditor? Who are they able to support, associate with? I don't think that they're doing a very good job of doing a complete audit against your policies. That's why I hear Mr. Powell, and Mr. Moore, and Mrs. Jordan saying, the policies are in place, but it sure doesn't sound like practices are following it. And I don't know anybody that will pass an audit against a really conservative county for, based on a script audit. So, I think I should have a sort of look into it.
I think you're right, and we have made some of those changes. We sure have. Okay, a couple more.
First of all, I'd like to say, I'm down here, like a lot of people are, to find out a figure for it. And I think you gentlemen drop in, tell these one of you council members, "Thank you, Mr. Rockwell, and you must definitely go find it." I don't think any fault, any of you gentlemen at all, I think it's just one of those things that happens. I'd also like to know, what is, there were three people that got large raises, and then Eric agreed. What is the status of all four of those right now for the town of Smithfield?
Status of the money, or what?
Are they fired? Are they working? Are they here? Are they gone? That's what I'd like to ask. We just want to know what they're in today. Or they're even more.
Okay. I guess first, I was, I was hired to come in and serve as interim manager for a short period of time, and part of that was to make a review, figure out what took place, what didn't. So, I did, I did my own review and reported that to the board in executive session. Clearly, I think the buck stops with the decision-making. I think the buck stops with decision-making. I think the buck stops with the manager. Manager, as a retired manager, I've always been responsible for the budget and responsible to be accountable for the actions of the budget. Then I come here and unfortunately, I'm put in a position to almost point fingers at one of my fellow managers. I regret that that had to happen, but it did. I look at, I look at the individual circumstances, I look at memos of things such as, Lenny Brand sitting back there. Lenny has been functioning in the role of director for a long time. It goes back even to the point of a memo from Pete Connet that says, "Lenny, please do this for another year and a half until we can, can do something because of tight budget." Lenny volunteered to do that. Now, we come up and we, and Eric recognized that, obviously, and said, "Let me, let me compensate you for that, I'll put it back in your budget," which he did. That's not Lenny's fault. There's nothing about this that's Lenny's fault. Now, unfortunately, because of the embarrassment of the whole darn thing, Lenny lost that raise he got last year. But Lenny deserves that raise. So, you know, how do you deal with it? Hopefully, we...
First of all, thank you. I live in this family, and I, I've been, my family, I have been ridiculed of this, and thank you, thank you, as a taxpayer and a boy.
I just want to say that you've got, you've got a very, very fine finance director. He was put in an awkward, strange situation. And again, the finance director is hired by and supervised by the manager. And again, back to my career, my career was always good for forty-eight hours because that's how long it took to call a council meeting. I had no contract, never needed one, because I didn't ever pull any stunt. So, in all honesty, you've got to stop somewhere, and you can't stop with the people that get the job done. I mean, now, that's probably enough said, but I think we have corrected the problem, we're moving forward, and now we need to assure the community that we're going to do everything we can to do what's right.
The board have any other questions?
I have a question. All of those were discussed in the March, is that correct?
Again, I'm, I think that's a good approximation of when the ball got, started rolling on it. There was some dispute as to the exact...
Is my understanding that why was they divert back to your previous salary?
That's right. Yes.
Is that correct? Why? Why was he not stopped immediately?
Because, in my recommendation to the board, we had not yet done this kind of review. And secondly, is it fair to do that immediately if, in fact, it was given by the supervisor to the employee, and they had made financial decisions of their own and adjusted their own lifestyle accordingly, and we gave them time to readjust back to what was coming? So, that was because they did not do anything wrong, they accepted what was given to them. That's the position that I took.
Mr. Blanchard, we thank you.
I want to say one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
As a member of the appearance commission, every month, we have a treasures report. And our committee goes over that treasures report. We know exactly where we spend our money every month, our little bit of money. We don't have a lot of money, a low budget. I want to know, doesn't any council get a monthly treasures report? And if so, are you able to look at it and see where that money's going? Do you see a red flag? Do you get a monthly report?
We do not get it.
That would be maybe something good, you know, if a lot of people are looking at, like every month, when I'm at the appearance commission, if there's, if the money's not there, I know something's happened. So, maybe that would be a good idea for our council to have a monthly report.
Thank you, Ms. Rags.
Mr. Blanchard, just one other quick question. Regarding the vacation payout and so forth, that's, the way that it occurred makes it very difficult to budget for that, and we've already, we already discussed about the need possibly for, I guess, a budget amendment, because that put, put us basically over budget. In your opinion, while conducting this investigation, do you believe that the ex-city manager was negligent in, in the use of town funds by approving, he's admitted correctly that he approved it. Do you think that he was negligent in the use? It has put us over budget.
I'm always reluctant to use this, you know, that particular term. I will say that, you know, the town manager... I will say that, you know, the town manager, as Mr. Goble pointed out, the buck stops there for things like this. I mean, he is the captain of the ship in a town. So ultimately, responsibility for something like this rests with the town manager. Now, if what Ms. Godwin said accurately portrays, portrays, for example, the vacation pay, I would find it very troubling, very troubling, that the chief executive that you have for any corporation, not just this municipal corporation, would say, "Go ahead and cash out, you know, whatever." Because, and I do want to include that caveat that a lot of these facts on those things are disputed. You get two different versions of it. So if what Mr. Williams, if you accept his version of the events, you draw one set of conclusions about his culpability here, and if you accept the other witnesses' version of the events, you reach an entirely different conclusion. And I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do know what I believe.
This one's even more difficult, because in this situation, we don't even have a form. Is that correct?
That's true. That's true.
At least in the raise we had, and we have an, I guess, an unsigned form by the manager, but in case of the, we don't even have a form, period. So all we have is-
That's right. I don't know what you're, I guess, I don't know if you call it an audit trail.
No emails or anything that you were able, that was produced?
No.
I'd like to say one other thing right quick about town employees. I was a town employee for 16 years. We have good employees, got great employees. We've got employees that work hard for what little bit they make. And I just want to assure the public that a town of Smithville has great employees. Just because a couple, or three, or whatever, that, you know, rotten apple in the barrel thing, just don't judge all the town employees by these that are under question. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Blanchard, we thank you for your time. We thank you for your review. And we will ultimately be in touch, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be moving through to the next line item, which will be the public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing, if you would, please stand and let the clerk swear you in. Go ahead, we'll talk.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and none of the truth that held you back?
Okay, our first public hearing will be the proposed budget for 2011 and 12 budget hearing. Mr. Mayor, I'll address you on that.
Okay, General Statute requires that we hold a public hearing prior to adoption of the budget. The public hearing's been duly advertised, and tonight, we'd like to hear from the public on the proposed budget as presented last week to the board.
Have anybody wishing to speak upon the budget tonight? Okay. Hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A sec. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, those are closed. All right, we'll proceed on with tweaking out the budget as we continue to look at that more closely. The second will be the hearing on the financing agreement with the Smithville Crossing Roadway Project. I think Mr. Merritt stepped out a moment, so we will, if it's okay with the board, we'll switch to the third one for just now. Conditional use permit to allow retail kiosks on the sidewalks of the Carolina Premium Outlet Mall for the sale of food and other retail projects. Ms. Emmler?
Hey, to give you a little bit of background to this, several years ago, the outlet mall came to us and requested six kiosks for food. Now, they want to up that total to 10, and it would be a combination of food and merchandise. And the merchandise would be very similar to what would be found in most malls as far as the display. But the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for outdoor sales of properties located within the B3 zoning district. The properties in consideration are northeast and northwest of the intersection of Industrial Park Drive and Components Drive, and further identified by the Johnston County tax numbers. The petitioner is requesting a conditional use permit to operate up to 10 retail kiosks on the sidewalk of Carolina Premium Outlet for the sale of food and retail products. The request will be expanded on a, be an expansion of the permit that was issued in 2004, that only allows for six food vending kiosks. The proposed kiosk will be set up on the sidewalks near the entrances to the various stores, and it should not be allowed to interfere with automobile traffic or pedestrian traffic. Permitting the blanket conditional use permit will relieve the applicant from returning to the town council for individual permits for outdoor sales. It's made meeting, the planning board unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request for the conditional use permit, and the town council has now requested to review the petition and make a decision for conditional use permit to allow up for, up to 10 kiosks for the sale of food and other products at the Carolina Premium Outlet Mall.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the request for the conditional use permit. Do we have any questions for Ms. Emmler?
Mr. Emmler, is there anything in our regulations that this petition does not fit? And I'm referring to the four conditions we have to consider when we approve this. Does it meet all of the conditions and specifications that you-
Within the conditions that are found in the Uniform Development Ordinance, it does meet those conditions.
It does not adversely affect the use or any physical attribute of adjoining or budding property for that use in the public.
That is correct.
It will not endanger the public health and safety or general welfare.
That is correct.
And finally, the location and character of use, if developed according to plan as submitted approved, will be in harmony within the area specified, and that the conditional use shall demonstrate the conformance of the land use plan. I think you addressed that.
That is correct. And they, by the way, they will, the outlet malls will be submitting to the planning department individual locations of the kiosks, because they will change from time to time, and we will monitor them to make sure that there's no more than 10 kiosks at any given time, and that handicap accessibility and access and fire lanes are protected for the various stores.
Mr. Emmler, these will be on the sidewalks. Is that correct? Kiosks will be on the sidewalks?
The retail sales, yes. Some of the food vendors, as they are presently, could still potentially be in the parking lot in grass areas.
My only, my only concern here is especially, it's very busy out there all the time, and it seems to me, just personally, that the sidewalks there are fairly narrow themselves, especially when the doors are opening to the outside. My only concern here would be if these kiosks are set up, and especially in times when high-volume traffic, especially during maybe holidays, Christmas, and so forth, that it would hinder the shoppers' ability to safely walk on those sidewalks, and that they may have to venture out into the fire lane and/or the flow of traffic there. That's, do you see a concern there? And I would, that is my concern, and I guess with that, I would say that if this is to be allowed, that that be strictly monitored, and that we have the ability to, to ask them to remove those if it does pose a problem.
Yes, sir. Each individual one that is put in place out there, we will have to approve the location through the planning department of where the kiosk is located, so we can make sure it has adequate clearances, safely away from the vehicular traffic, and also provides access, not only for pedestrians, but handicap accessibility also. We will be monitoring those. For the first year, when they put these in, it's gonna be a lot of work on the planning departments, but as they go back year after year and repeat the same kiosk, it will, it will be easier. And I'm sure we're gonna have to tweak some as time goes-
Sure, and I can understand that. But procedurally, will you have the ability to regulate without us acting on it? If you see there are problems that you may not foresee in the planning stage here, will you have the ability, under your authority in the planning department, to ask them to remove them? That's, I guess, is what I'm asking, or do we need to actually act on it?
If this board so chooses to award a conditional use permit, it is the planning department, the planning department's responsibility to enforce the conditions and the accessibility issues with the kiosks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Emmler? Not, do I have a motion that this conditional use be allowed in the retail?
Motion.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Supposed. I think it is duly noted, Ms. Emmler, for Councilman Moore's concerns. I can understand those being out there.
I will make a special point to put that into the approval letter, too, with the partner with the outlet malls, and then we will follow up on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emmler. We'll go back to the second hearing, hearing of financial agreement for the Smithville Crossing Roadway Project. Mr. Merritt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize for being out as it approached. This is a public hearing for citizen comments on the proposed Smithville Crossings project, that is to improve the roadway system out towards the Carolina Premium Outlets. Generally, what is required by the local government commission is that we do give citizens the opportunity to comment or give their critiques or approval of the plan. And at that point in time, I will, I'll take any questions from the council or citizens, and we'll take any comments that they may have.
First of all, is there any questions from the board generally, to Ms. Emmler? Merritt? Or if there's any from the community on the crossings project that we're here, we've been talking about this for about, seems like eight or 10 years now. So I think we about talked it to death, but we'll still ask some more questions if we have any. It is a very good project. It's one that's gonna allow us to expand our roadway projects out there for commerce to come in our area, and it's a very exciting project for us. But we will open up any questions or comments we may have. Hearing none, Mr. Merritt?
There are no comments. The only other thing we need to do is approve the resolution for the filing of an application for approval of a financing agreement authorized by North Carolina General Statute 168-20. That is required by the local government commission to move forward with this project and submit an application to them.
Do we have a copy of the resolution on page one? Do I have a motion on this agreement?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Motion. In a second. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Those opposed? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we open up the floor now for citizens' comments. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to anything other than what we've already addressed this evening, feel free to come up and share what's on your mind. Now's the time for that. Ms. Long? If you will come right over and, we know you, but if you will state your name for the Madam Clerk, so she can have a Madam Record.
All right. My name is Kay Long, 302 East Church Street, Smithville.
Ms. Kay.
Good evening. I'd like to speak regarding the property at 1011 Vermont Street. I think you've all heard about that a few times. That property, just to set the record straight, that property has never belonged to Barry and I. It was reported incorrectly in the paper. That property belonged to our son. It burned. It took several months to settle things with the insurance company. It was investigated because of the arsonist that's, it was set by an arsonist after the Once the insurance company paid off, we had to hire an attorney to settle with the mortgage company that were trying to charge unfair fees. It took a while before anything could be done there. My husband and I stepped up and paid, loaned the money to my son, since he was left in debt after the property was paid off. We loaned him the money to demolish the house. It has been demolished. I know the neighbors are happy. I hope they are. It has been ceded, and we will together try to maintain the property, which is for sale now. I hope that everyone is happy. I hope that if you receive, any councilman or the mayor receives any other negative comments, that someone will go over there and check out the property before calling us again and complaining.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any citizens' comments regarding?
And I live right next door.
Ms. Grimes, if you'll just please come up and tell them, if you will, just for Madam Record.
I appreciate the fact that you have cleaned up the property. And yes, it does look much better. But I would like to know when this rubber is gonna be trimmed, from June to June. No one has trimmed up, wrecked, done anything. And that would be greatly appreciated.
May I answer?
Yes, ma'am.
It probably won't be done. I hope you'll be happy. We will keep it, we're gonna have to sell. I'm not going over there. I wish it was like I would.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Sell.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Anyone else with citizens' comments tonight?
Mr. Mayor, just have one question, because I did mean to ask it a minute ago. Is Ms. Godwin on vacation today? See, she's not present.
No question.
No. She is not on vacation. Okay.
All right, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving the new business, we'll look at the consideration of a temporary construction easement for 70 Business Bridge replacement. Mr. Goble?
Okay. I see the correct name in my pocket. I need to meet with Heather Scott, right-of-way agent with Right-of-Way Branch and Vision Highways. They have come back and requested from us an additional easement next to the bridge. It's pretty much the slope part. I think maybe Paul or Lenny can answer it a little better. There's really no problem with that. There's no problem with that from our point of view, with an exception that the, some of the shrubbery will need to come out, so we have asked if they could fund putting some of that back. We actually asked if they could re-landscape it and put it back. She called back and said they could perhaps fund some of the improvements to it after we come back to re-landscape. So that little bit of it is still, I guess, in negotiation as to exactly what that dollar amount would be, but we need to approve or authorize staff to execute. Which side? Is that the north side or the south side?
Lenny can probably explain that better. You were the-
It was on the south.
South side.
Okay, do we have a-
Make a motion that we approve the additional easement.
Second. Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. I'll make my report very brief. We have, several months ago, we talked about the Duke Energy and Progress Energy update of how we had wanted to participate with five or six other cities in the merger to help with this merger, to make sure it was in the best interest of our community, the town of Smithville. We did participate that with the North Carolina Eastern Power Agency, also drafted a merger agreement based on that, that will assist in reducing our cost, we hope. And the amount of the first phase of that, which the board agreed to do, was $12,425 and some few cents. The board's direction was that we only go through Phase 1. Phase 1 has been completed. There is a merger agreement that has been put together by the cities, and has been accepted by elector cities to carry to Duke and Progress Energy on our behalf. accepted by elector cities to carry to Duke and Progress Energy on our behalf. It's a very good agreement, it covers a lot of the things that we have concerns over, and I'm very thankful that this agreement was put together, because it really gives us a voice for the first time in such an opportune time, I think, as this merger starts. So, the board has already agreed to do this, but the expenditures were never signed and sent out by the manager, so I wanted to bring it back before this board to make sure that we paid the, our fair shares, we've agreed to do, the other cities have paid their fair shares, and we have not. So I need a motion, if we will, that this payment of $12,425.21 will be submitted to the FERC attorney that worked on our behalf.
Question. Is this an additional... Did we pay, did we pay the first payment?
No, we did not. This is the first payment.
This is, okay.
It was my understanding that the payment was made in our lap, another one of those discoveries, that it was not paid.
Okay, all right.
It was never signed. So we've got a motion on the floor, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much, that will really put us in a good light there, I think, for consideration for lower rates. The next thing I just wanted to mention is we've got a big event coming up, a very positive event, the triathlons coming up on the 18th. It's the Three Little Pigs, am I right, Tim? Mr. Josh, why don't you mention that and just give us some education on that, it's a great big event for us.
The main thing with the, to make the councilor in the community here, anybody that might come out on the 18th, if you set a hurry to start, it's a fundraiser for the Claybrook Club, Senator Johnson Claybrook, and the Smithfield Bridge Report last year, they split it about $13,000, so great event, good for two good causes, and it's a huge economic impact to the community. Last year, they were 370 participants, we're about 20% above registration right now, we think we have in excess of 400 participants. Last year, there were 75 plus, three were rented, a local area, I'm sure that'll be leased out by the county. And it's just a great event, even council community that can come out that day briefly, so it's a pretty big event, with a deep...
It is, I was out there last year, Tim, and I tell you, it's a great event, there's a lot of people out there, so if you hadn't been to one of those, please go and enjoy that. That's pretty much my report, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Actually, nothing else to report, just it's been an incredibly busy month, we've still got a lot to do. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Chris, I was going, I about forgot you here, I apologize.
Counsel, I need permission from this board on street closing for the July 4th celebration, which we'll actually have on July 2nd, a Saturday. Due to the fact of the change in the law last year, we had to move it, and so I just need permission to close it. We will, the festival will only cost less than $10,000, which is considerably less than any other surrounding communities, but we'll have an excellent event. I want to thank Tim and also the fire department for working with us as we're, as we've always done in the past, so I just need permission to have the street closed on July 2nd, Front Street, from 3 o'clock till 10.
You've heard the request, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion in a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Look forward to another good event, Chris, thank you, I'll do a good job. At this point, I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? It will be adjourned for closed session. It will be adjourned for closed session.